All right, we'll call the meeting to order. The Belvidere City Council Committee of the Whole of August 12th, 2024 to order. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini?
Here.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
Gramkowski?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present?
Okay, thank you. And we do have a couple individuals that are registered for public comment. First, Michael Hart. Michael, good evening. Come on up.
Oh, yeah, Michael Hart, 516 North State Street in Belvidere. I'm here just as a resident of Ward Two to just register my disapproval of the nomination of Rory Peterson for the Ward Two interim alderman. I prefer someone more closely related or recommended by the current alderpersons that serve my district, and that's really it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. And next we have Dan Snow.
Dan Snow, being the forealderman, I had made a recommendation for that position to be the Republican candidate that had run against me. The argument that somebody ran for a seat and should be appointed to an empty seat, which would be Mr. Clayton Stevens. We'll see what happens because Ron Chilson ran for the seat and apparently is not being considered, and Rory Peterson is. And to be quite frank, before I left, the council was 50-50 on critical matters, and right now it's obviously four-five in that favor, and with Rory Peterson, it'll be six-four. So I'm not opposed to people saying yes to the mayor. I was never an anti-mayor in that regard, but yes, people are not the way to go. And hopefully, the people that are on the council that are yes people will hold true to making it fair a process and have Ron Chilson appointed, or and some of the people that are yes people to the mayor will reconsider and make a reasonable choice. I'm sure the mayor will give arguments about his position later on in the agenda, but at this point, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
All right, that's all we have registered, and we will bring this up. It is on the agenda. Certainly, I think, I don't know what's more important for the city of Belvidere is to have individuals that are objective or to have yes and no, yes or no people. I don't want anybody in that category. I want the most qualified individual, and in this case, we'll get to that later on in the agenda. Also, I wanted to point out, National Night Out was a success. We had roughly 200 people attend at Big Thunder Park, and I think the public turned out, certainly with a fair being in session. I thought it was a great turnout. I think the police department did a wonderful job. Chief Woody, he's not here this evening, but obviously, he was there, and it was a great event, I thought, for all. As well, I wanted to inform the council that, as you may know, you may not know, but the state had went ahead and decided that they were going to take the 1% food tax off and that the city has depended on for revenue. I had sent a letter of opposition to that along with many of the other surrounding mayors. I think the 1% will affect the city of Belvidere to the tune of about $920,000 to $1 million a year. It will affect our budget, so it will create a shortfall. I don't have to tell the council that we have a significant shortfall with the paramedic issue as well. We're trying to get our way through the mechanism that allows us to be reimbursed. So this on top of that is going to be significant. I would like to bring that up again later, and we can certainly talk about that, but I did want to, for those who weren't aware of it, that will be a significant shortfall for not only the city of Belvidere but for other communities. And anyhow, with that being said, that's all we have for public comment. Public forum, we have none, reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Item one, building planning zoning, unfinished business, we have none. Flip the page, item two, building planning zoning, new business. We have item A, Building Department Update. Mr. Kip Countryman?
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of July, we issued 124 permits for a value of construction just under $3 million. Twenty-three of those were commercial. We had two single-family homes. If you're driving around State and Logan, it's getting pretty busy down there. We've got a lot of permits issued for some front facades in that area, and Midland Bank is getting ready to start their renovation. They will close that branch during construction. 301 North State is renovating that building also, updating their bathrooms. 610 Logan, which is the old Logan School, has addressed some fire separation issues for that, for hopefully some expansion. Buchanan Street's going to be busy with a lot of activity, exterior work, and interior tenant space build-outs. 675 Corporate Parkway installed a new fire alarm. There's a new occupant for that structure. 1140 Locust, blower replacement, that's the green bin. Yukon is hopefully scheduled to start automation for the interior of the building in December, and that will be about a year and a half project. MRS is busy doing mechanicals inside the property, and Fuel Center has been finalled out, and I believe there's a ribbon-cutting Friday at 11 o'clock if anybody wants to attend. And that concludes my report, and I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Countryman? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So there's been some rumors that Ed and Cindy Pete's old place, SS Subs, that they sold, that the city has been holding that up with inspections. Is that on the new owners, or is that really a shortfall of the city?
As far as I know, we've only done plumbing. The permit that was issued was for Health Department's recommendations on upgrading some issues with the building. The map sync was also being used to wash your hands if you have to go to the bathroom there, so the Health Department had some issues with that, and they had wanted to upgrade the building, put a grease trap, three-sync, things that weren't there that kind of were overlooked for the previous owner. As far as inspections, we haven't been holding anything up.
Okay, so it's just the new owners that haven't gotten the stuff done and contacted you for the inspections?
Yeah, I have no idea. We, I can talk to John and see what the current state of the permit is, but on the cities, we're not holding anything up.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Countryman? Okay, and as Kip had mentioned, 11 o'clock this Friday, we will have a ribbon-cutting. I think everybody received an invite, did you not? Okay, so if you can make it, that would be good. Item B, thank you, Kip, item B, Planning Zoning Department Update, Ms. Del Rose?
Good evening. Good evening. Cases are kind of at a lull right now. That's usually what happens because everyone's busy in construction, and then they start doing their zoning matters in the off-season once construction dies down. So no active cases this month or next month, but staff is working on doing site inspections. Downtown overlay reviews are going on for the projects that Kip mentioned for downtown. Zoning verification letters are still going strong. Historic preservation, since office planning is at a lull, I can focus more on historic preservation for the next couple months, so I would imagine you'll be seeing some upcoming fundraisers and other outreach, community outreach events. Staff did help with the Boone County Wellness Fair, and I did send out reminder letters to two special uses that are getting ready to expire to see if the property owners are still wanting to pursue those matters or if they're letting them void out.
Okay, is there any questions for Ms. Del Rose? Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. I'm not sure this is for Eugene or might be for Kip, but when the Truck Center initial, had their initial plans, they're going to have a mural on the side of the building to kind of embrace city murals in Belvidere. Has they gone forward with that yet, or the request process?
I did talk to one of the partners involved maybe two or three weeks ago. They reached out and wanted contact information for local artists and the Arts Council, so I believe they still are pursuing that. They're just trying to determine on an image and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again. Been a minute since we've heard from our comprehensive plan people. Do we know when they're going to have the final for that to present us?
They did. The council approved it. The council approved the draft that was presented to them with the removal of high-density residential on Business Route 20, I think in one other area, but otherwise, it was approved. So it has been updated. It is on GIS, it is on the public access, and as soon as our large-scale printer is functioning again, it will be printed off and put in this room as well.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yeah, that may have been, I think it was approved two months ago.
It was, but I didn't get the final digital layers until about a month ago, and then it was taking the final digital layers that we had and putting them in a, GIS department had to put them in a format that could then get posted online and be interactive, and now the print had to our large-scale printers on the outs, so we got to wait for a new one to come in before we can print. But it'll all get done. Thank you.
And the only changes that we had done was in regards to the density that we had concerns about, so that's what it reflects. All right, any other questions for Ms. Del Rose? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Gina. And item C, we have in front of you this evening on the agenda, the appointment of Paul Ingleman as Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission. In your packet was a memo from me dated July 10th of 2024 regarding the appointment of the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll read it. "The Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission is comprised of seven members, each serving a five-year term. There is a one-year chairperson term to be served by a commission member. At their July 9th, 2024 meeting, the commission nominated Paul Ingleman to serve as chairperson. I would request a motion to consent to and approve the appointment of Paul Ingleman to serve as chairperson of the Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission for a one-year term ending May of 2025." If I could have that motion, please. Motion by Alderwoman Frank, second by Alderwoman Mahal. Thank you both. So I know Paul Ingleman. I've known Paul Ingleman for many, many years, and I think Paul does an excellent job on the planning commission. Him and Carol Ganebu have kind of handed off the chairmanship here maybe every year for a while, but both of them do an excellent job, and I think Paul would be, will continue as long as he wants to continue, do an excellent job. So if there's any questions, try and answer. And if not, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? All right, motion passed. Thank you. Item three, Public Works unfinished business, we have none. Item four, Public Works new business. Item A, Public Works Department Update, Director Anderson, good evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. Three items to update on. Item number one being the rain event, storm event that we had back in the weekend of July 13th through Monday, the 15th. We had 7.3 inches of rain that fell in the city, which caused a backup at our wastewater treatment plant. Saturday morning, the 14th, or the 13th, I'm sorry, our flow at the treatment plant was at 2.09 million gallons, and it increased after the storms to 19.5 million gallons. Our treatment plant has a average, design average flow of 5.8, which correlates to that 2.09 number, and our max design for high-flow design is 9.85 million gallons. So that 19.5 is a really high number. The other issue that we had for this storm was our overflow capabilities includes a 6.5 million gallon pond on the west end of the property to utilize. Unfortunately, when these storms came through, it was already three-quarters full from previous storms that we had. The storms knocked out our internet service to the treatment plant, which eliminated our primary call-out system. Our backup call-out system for the main equipment building was not operating because of an open-in-alarm. On Sunday morning, 9:00 a.m., responding to an alarm for the tertiary buildings at the treatment plant, employees found that there was flooding in the lower levels of the main equipment building. Of course, the entire Public Works Department was called in. We had to do, implement bypass pumping, which required 24-hour staffing. That was started on Sunday, July 14th, and that temporary pumps, the last of the temporary pumps were shut down on Thursday, July 25th. Once we had the pumps, some pump replacements done in the main equipment building, had that pumped down and back to operation. So as you may recall, we had a similar but different incident, same result, flooding in the main equipment building just about a year, almost exactly a year ago in 2023. In that case, there was lightning damage, damaged our skated control system, which in turn caused a pipe to burst, which flooded the basement. In this case, basically with all this water coming in, we weren't able to bypass as we normally do because of how the pond was filled, and so we had to bypass this way, and it was just basically inundation with the rain event. So we're still reviewing the incident, still going through the, identifying the corrective actions that we are needed to mitigate future occurrences. One thing's for sure, though, when you see that's kind of a spike in inflow from 2 to 19, we will be doing some additional further inflow and infiltration, always known as INI. If you can remember, probably about, I would say probably seven to 10 years ago, we were doing some INI work on the east end of town, and we have done some pipe work also in the last three or four years for some of the chronic ones that we found during that review, so we're going to be doing some further reviews. We've compiled the list from all the lift stations to see what their peaks were at as well during the storm event, to go in that direction as well as looking at some of our truck lines as well. So last year's event, we finally got notification of insurance. We're going to receive an insurance payment for that one. We haven't received it yet, but we did get confirmation that that is coming, so, and then there's been a claim made for this event as well. So I'll keep council posted, but you'll be seeing some expenses coming through, through bills payable for some of the repairs and things that we had to do. All right. Number, item number two, lead service line inventory. Our initial report is due to the IEPA September 1st, and currently, we have sent out our second notices, and we're getting a real good response with those, actually scheduling a lot of visits now to get in the basements to confirm pipe types. Basically, we've got 70% of the town covered, so there's a remaining 30% left to do. So hopefully, in this next couple of weeks, we'll get the majority, and we'll be able to get that initial report off to the state, and then we'll keep follow-up until we have all of them identified. Once that's done, I will outline either at the next committee meeting probably, or the following committee meeting, what our next steps will be in the process and what that's going to include. And the third thing is the, we implemented our latest wireless payment options for water and sewer bills. We did that in May, and checking with what we've seen for the first three months, May, June, and July, it looks like we're getting about a 10% usage right now. 10% of our other payments and stuff are being done through the wireless version, so it looks like at least that we're off to a fairly good start, and hopefully, we'll see that increasing. So if there's any questions?
Any questions for Director Anderson? Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you. Director Anderson, is there a savings by doing the wireless, or is it just a convenience?
It was, it's a convenience for the residents.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? Alderman Albertini?
Thank you, Mayor. This isn't on this topic, but I keep meaning to ask this. The pavement markings, lines, stops at lights and stuff, there's a lot of streets that don't have that anymore. It's been wore off. Are we planning on doing that soon?
Yeah, we started that last week, actually, focusing on around school areas first to get all the crosswalks and everything done within schools, and then once that's done, we'll be branching out for the rest of the city.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. As well as the significant rain event that we had, I think you said, Director Anderson, that we had 7.3 inches. Was that what you had mentioned?
That was the official, we have a Weather Service rain gauge, official rain gauge at the, on the wastewater treatment plant property, and that was cumulative for over that weekend was 7.3 received there.
Right. And so I do know that that's very unusual. I don't know, we used to say we had a 100-year event, and then it seemed to be like the 100-year event would be maybe every 10 years, and then it seemed like, depending on when it was, it was every five years, maybe even four years, but I don't recall an event like that that had came after the ground being so inundated, and I think that actually, we did very well. A lot of communities look at what happened in Rockford. When you look at over there, they had boats and cars and everything else going down the creeks and streets over there. So we actually have done quite a bit to mitigate some of the flooding, and I think that has paid off. Is it perfect? Probably not, but it certainly has made a difference. I don't know if you wanted to comment on that or not.
You're correct. The surface water seems to, so far, it's working pretty good for the improvements that have been completed and so forth. It is having, seems to have an effect, having a positive effect on storm events, and yes, they've recently changed, updated the bulletin, they used to call it the Bulletin 70 rainfall amounts. They have since updated those to compensate or to reflect the increased amount of rainfall that we are experiencing, so we don't see any letup in that, unfortunately.
Okay. All right, thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Brent, are we still doing the street sweeper stuff? Is the street sweeper still coming by? I haven't seen him in a long time.
You haven't seen him probably in a little while because the street sweeper people would be the ones that are now painting the crosswalks and doing that, so, but he'll be back out in full force and effect once the painting's done, as soon as the leaves start dropping, which, you know, fall's coming pretty quick, so we'll be back out there doing that.
Okay. Any other questions for Director Anderson before we move on? All right, hearing none. Moving on, item B, Irene Road Realignment Project, change order four, in your packet from Director Anderson dated August 7th of 2024, is a memo regarding a change order, and Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. A memo in the packet, attached to that memo is the change order number four request. This will be the pre-final, if you will. There will be a request number five that will basically be for the purpose of balancing the quantities as a part of the project closeout. This particular change order includes junction boxes for new streetlights. That was a requirement. The plans had originally anticipated that the disconnects and the fuses and so forth needed for each of the lights would be able to be housed within the light poles themselves. It was found that it was just too cramped, couldn't do it. State IDOT recommended that we use the Quasid boxes, so that's what you see there for the change order. Relocating traffic signs, again, requests that came through IDOT, some of the pole-mounted sign, or some of the post-mounted signs at the intersections and so forth, they requested those to be relocated onto mastarms and the new traffic signal arms. So that, of course, reflects that, and there's some additional thermoplastic pavement markings that were required to finish the project. Overall, as far as change orders go, we've done very well. It's only been 3% of the original contract amount. Therefore, I would recommend approval of the IDOT request for approval of change in plans form in the amount of $15,209 for the Irene Road Realignment Project. This work will be paid for from grant funds.
Okay. If I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Stevens, thank you, and a second? Anybody? Second by Alderman McGee, thank you both. Any questions, any comments regarding the change order? Alderman Albertini?
Thank you, Mayor. I see that the way this is stated, maybe it's just my cranial bringing it in this way, it says here it's an IDOT request. Does that mean that this is just a request, or is it a mandate?
Well, it's a requirement, but we have to, this is the form that you have to use to submit it to IDOT for their approval. So I'm getting, I'm requesting your approval for me to submit this to IDOT for their approval.
I understand. All right.
Okay. Alderwoman Freeman?
So grant funds paying for this, are there grant funds left over still, or are we looking to get a new grant for this from the state?
No, this goes into the project totals and the grant, the grant range. The grants that we received... The grants that we received were actually in excess of what the bid amount was, uh, for what they put in. So yes, it will be covered. And some of this may even be part of the state or the states agreed at the intersections. The intersection with US Route 20, they're paying 100% of that cost. So there may be a portion of this that's actually paid directly from the state, but irregardless, it'll be grant funds used.
Thank you.
Alrighty, um, any other questions, uh, regarding the motion on the floor? Okay. Hearing none, uh, all those, uh, in favor of the motion, uh, to recommend approval of I dot request for approval of the change in plans form in the amount of $15,209 for the Irene Road realignment project, which will be paid for from grant funds. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Okay. Motion passed, thank you. All right, under five other, uh, in your packet is a memo from me dated, uh, August 8th regarding the appointment to fill the vacancy of Ward Two Alder Person, uh, created by Alderman Snow's resignation. I offer my appointment of Rory Peterson to fill the vacancy for Ward Two Alder Person created by, uh, Alderman Snow's resignation. Attached, find a letter of interest I have received from Mr. Peterson, which demonstrates his dedication to the city and his desire to serve. If I could have a motion to that effect?
I'd make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderwoman Frank, uh, thank you both. There is a letter that's attached to this and I want to read it because I had received this from Mr. Peterson, dated July 23rd of 2024, and I'll read it. Mayor Morris, I would like to ask for your consideration of this letter expressing my interest in filling the vacancy occasioned by the resignation of Alderman Snow. The particulars of my suitability are as follows. I am a lifelong, lifelong resident of Belvedere and a senior citizen. I have been a second ward resident for 22 years. I am a Republican and have previously been a candidate for second ward alderman and served from 1991 to 1997 as a Republican mayor here in the city of Belvedere. The instant, uh, office was vacated by a Republican. I am retired from a career of serving as a locomotive engineer. I have served on the Belvedere Historic Preservation Commission and the Boone County Historical Society Board. I am a member of the Belvedere Masonic Lodge, Lake State's Railroad Railway Historical Association and the Railway and Locomotive Historical Society. I have followed the work and deliberations of the Belvedere City Council and I am well familiar with its impact in every regard. I am competent, confident of not being hampered by a learning curve. Turnover can certainly be an impediment, but I believe I bring experience to mitigate that on behalf of the ward and our city. Thank you for, thank you for your consideration of this, Rory Peterson. Um, so I had received this letter and the other thing that I wanted to make sure that the council does understand as they make a decision. And it was brought up, there was brought up a yes and a no club and what have you. And, um, you know, the yes and no club, um, you may be on a yes or no club, I don't know. Uh, I want to be on the, on the club that works for the city of Belvedere. And, uh, in order to do that, we need people that are interested and that are residents of Belvedere and want to do the same thing. I think that, uh, Mayor Peterson, former Mayor Peterson, uh, brings as much experience as you can have. Plus, not only that, uh, Mayor Peterson has been present at quite a few council meetings here. Um, there have been many times he's been in the audience and I think he spoke on behalf of several issues, uh, regarding the residents here. So I think, uh, I think, uh, you know, in earnest, we need good individuals that serve. If there's anybody that has anything, other, otherwise, uh, this would be my appointment. I think, uh, when we had talked about having a candidate, uh, Alderman Snow had presented an individual that I hadn't even received, uh, I didn't receive any letter from that individual, uh, or I didn't even receive any notice. And, uh, so that's the appointment. I would hope that the council looks at, uh, any appointment and they look at this individual's qualifications, uh, their integrity, their long-term service in the community and all of the qualifications that they bring in order to not serve, not serve me, but serve our, our citizens and serve, uh, serve the, the city council. So I think that's fair. Many of the discussions that, uh, had come before the city council, and I'll give you a few examples so that, uh, you may recall, we had somebody come into the city council with UTVs. They wanted to drive UTVs up and down the streets of Belvedere. Alderman Snow and several of the other aldermen thought that was a great idea. As a matter of fact, they kicked it out of committee. Immediately when I talked to this individual, I knew that was a bad idea and I think we all know that was a bad idea now. But it was entertained, I thought, because of not wanting to do the right thing. And, and believe me, it was the wrong thing to even entertain putting UTVs on the streets of Belvedere, my goodness gracious. And, uh, but yet Mayor Peterson, former Mayor Peterson, he was in the audience because I saw him. And he cared about doing the right thing and so didn't many other residents that showed up here. I know with the tax levy as well, we had a 17.3% tax levy that was again initiated by Alderman Snow. And, uh, I don't know where Alderman Snow thinks that he is on the right side of an appointment that is my choice and it's a council's, it's up to the council to confirm them. But with the 17.3% tax levy, that was unnecessary. We certainly didn't have to, we didn't have to put a 17.3% tax levy on the citizens of Belvedere, nor should we have. But again, out in the audience, uh, Mayor Peter, former Mayor Peterson was out here because he realizes that's a bad move too, especially if you don't have to. I think when you do things like that, you can never take them back. And, uh, when you allow, for instance, UTVs to be put on the streets, look at what they're doing in Rockford. And I know Alderman Snow's smiling, I think he thinks it's funny, I don't. But look what they're doing in Rockford now. They're offering $200 reward for individuals that turn other people in because they have UTVs, allowed UTVs on the streets. It didn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that was a bad move then and it was a bad move. And, uh, but unfortunately, I think the council needs to see things like that with some clarity. So I would ask, uh, to judge this individual, not on the fact that you think, uh, that he may be saddled up in your corner or, uh, he may side with somebody else. I've known Mayor Peterson a long time and I'll guarantee you that nobody's going to influence him to do the right thing. Nobody. And I would never insult him by doing it, trying to do that. So I think you have in front of you as good of a, as good of an appointment, uh, as I would ever make, uh, on behalf of the taxpayers in this community. Alderman Burden?
Thanks, Mayor. So first of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Peterson for his interest in the position and for his previous service to the city of Belvedere. As a former mayor and former candidate for the second ward, I'd say he's qualified for the position. He might even be the most qualified. However, there have been individuals interested in this position since Mayor Peterson last ran for it. Most notably would be Jerry Hoines, who barely lost to Dan Snow in the last general election, along with Ron Chilson, who was also defeated by Dan Snow in the same year's primary. And then there's also Daniel Arevalo, who received the same number of votes as Alderwoman Mahal in their last election, but then he ended up losing a coin flip to lose the position. So I don't know about the first two that I mentioned, but Mr. Arevalo seems to want to be involved still, uh, because I believe I saw out at the fair, he's running for mayor. So no offense to anyone tonight, uh, but tonight I'm going to vote no on this, just for a possible chance to see who might be behind door number two. Thank you.
Okay. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again, Mayor. So, um, you know, I was never a fan of appointing someone to a vacated seat that had been rejected by the taxpayers. And I voted no on the last appointment, um, that you made for that reason. So, um, the logic used by this administration was, and also, um, I think reiterated by another alderwoman, um, that that person had showed the interest enough to actually run for that seat so that they had earned that spot now that there was a vacancy. And although I voted no, um, it was filled by that person. So I would think that the administration, um, in the interest of being consistent, would, um, take a look at some of the other people, um, Alderman Barrington just mentioned, rather than, um, somebody who hasn't been interested in that seat until there was a vacancy. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Alderman Stevens?
I worked with Rory for 15, over 15 years on the fire department. And like I said, he's definitely a guy of his own opinion. He's highly intelligent and, uh, I think he'd do great in the position. He was a great mayor for the city of Belvedere, so I, I don't know what else to say about him.
Okay. Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just curious, I, I don't know who Jerry Hoines is. I've heard the name, but I don't know who he is and I don't see Mr. Chilson in the audience. Have you received a letter from Mr. Hoines? Is he even interested?
I have received, um, interest from both, um, individuals and, um, you know, so, uh, the bottom line, I mean, the, the fact is, here, here's the fact, is that as the mayor, it's my duty to give the council a recommendation, an appointment. I mean, I suppose depending on what club you're in, as Alderman Snow liked to mention, yes or no, and he's been on the no club many, many times. And I think, you know, you can be an obstructionist and you can just say, well, I'm going to deny good people. I don't care what they've done in the city of Belvedere and I don't care what their background is in the city, but I'm just going to, I'm just going to vote no on that individual because, because what? Because they think they're in a club that, I don't know what the club it is. It's the, it should be the club of the taxpayer. It should be the club of the residents. That's what we should all be doing. And I do believe that this was the first individual that I had received interest from. And I, I would, uh, agree with Alderman Stevens. I don't think you're going to find anybody that has done more for the city of Belvedere and that continues, that would continue to want to do more. He served, as Alderman Stevens said, as a fireman here in the city of Belvedere, I don't know, for a number of years, and then as the mayor of the city of Belvedere. And, uh, so Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you again. Um, so I'm a, I'm in club ward three, that's who I represent, um, the people in the city of Belvedere. And to be categorized in a yes or no club is highly insulting. I think we all vote with our convictions and what our, our constituents want. So to divide the council, I think is just ridiculous.
Alderman Fleury?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, uh, I don't believe there are yes and no clubs. I think there, I myself also am for team, uh, fourth ward to take care of my citizens and all the citizens of Belvedere. I, I get to represent the fourth ward, but I feel like my decisions affect all of Belvedere, so I take that into account when I do make decisions. I think that where some of this, whatever you want to call it, club comes up is when people disagree with you, Mayor, then we're put into a negative light because we have a difference of opinion of you. And I don't think it's necessarily that one is right or one is wrong, it's just a difference of opinion. And I believe that's how democracy works when you have a reasonable case. Now, if people are doing it just to, uh, settle grudges, sure, that's a problem. But each time that someone disagrees with the majority, doesn't make them a bad person. They have a reason for their, uh, voice that way, that that's their opinion and that's what maybe their constituents are wanting, different than what, uh, other wards are doing. So I don't think that, I think that some of this problem has come down to when there's a disagreement, that sometimes, uh, the people that don't vote with you are ostracized and made an example of. And, uh, sometimes, quite frankly, you, you become somewhat of a bully to those people when all they're doing is sharing a difference of opinion. So it's not a matter of personal vendettas, it's a matter of just what you think is right. And going off, the last time what you said was your reason for appointing, um, Clayton Stevens was because he was on the ballot, but now that's not the case. So it's just a difference in, you've right, you have every right to appoint who you want because it's your appointment and we have the right as a council to say yes or no and not have any vendetta, would it just have our vote and our opinion of what our constituents are telling us.
And you know, I will give you this, um, I will tell you that, um, you know, I, there is no, uh, there is no vendetta, uh, on any alderman. I do believe that the issues that we vote on, I think they're pretty transparent. I think they're pretty obvious. I think the ones that I had spoken about, I don't think those are yes or no club. I think, uh, there is no yes or no club. I would agree with Alderwoman Gramkowski. Um, those are issues that to me are very, very clear, the ones that I had talked about. They're very clear. They're not good for the taxpayers of Belvedere. They're not good for the citizens of Belvedere. Do I take exception to that? I certainly do. And I think, I think those residents take exception to that too. I think, I think when I had talked about a couple of the examples, evidently you were on the wrong side of a couple of them. I don't know, I don't recall, but I will tell you that I do take exception whenever we're going to, we're going to turn public safety over to individuals that want to ride all over town and then we have to worry about enforcement. Public safety, quality of life, noise, all of that stuff. And when you talk about a increase in the, uh, tax levy, I'm trying to save residents' money. I don't know about you, but I think the most important thing is when we can save residents' money, then I think it's important that we try to save them money. Now, the garbage issue has been another, uh, recent one and I know people have said, well, the mayor had voted to break the tie. You bet I did. Absolutely I did and I'm proud of it. Because the overwhelming majority, again, are going to save money. Some people are going to pay half of what they were paying with the price of inflation being out of it. There is no nice way, I guess, for me to say, well, you know what? Other than I think it's political, I think you're right. I think there is a certain portion of the votes that take place here that are political and they're geared at politics and they're not geared at, they're not geared at doing the right thing. And they're not geared at, how do we help, how do we do our job and how do we support the taxpayer that put us into office to do our job? That's what I think. Now, if people get, um, you know, if they have, uh, they feel that they're, uh, they might be unfairly pointed out, that's what we're here for. We're here to make sure that the issues are debated and that the issues are discussed. And they're discussed so that they're decided fairly for the taxpayers, for the residents. It's not an easy job. I'll tell you that, not an easy job. But that's how I look at it. So Alderman Albertini?
Thank you, Mayor. I know we keep discussing about this yes and no club. Illustration came up in my mind is the last time we went through this same process, there was a gentleman named Michael Carlisle who was put up for the first ward seat. And, uh, the reason that it was stated that he wouldn't be put up is because he couldn't work with you. So I kind of put that as, is that put him in the no club then or?
I, did I say that I couldn't work with?
Yes, you did.
I said it. I couldn't work with Mike Carlisle.
Yes, you did.
I don't believe, I don't believe so. He might have said that. But he would, no, I didn't say that. I never said that. What I said was that he wasn't my choice. That's what I said. Don't put words in my mouth.
Okay, I'm not putting words in your mouth. When somebody asked you why you didn't put Michael Carlisle up, you said, because he's somebody I can't work with, and I'm not going to put somebody up I can't work with.
Well, you must imagine that because I never said that. So anyhow, here's, here's the rest of the story on that, is that you may, you don't know Michael Carlisle, but I had given the ward a recommendation for somebody that I felt would do a better job. I felt they would do the best job. That's exactly what you have in front of you this evening. There's no, there, you know, I mean, that may, that, that is definitely not true. And I take exception to that. And I don't know, I don't know if you dreamed that up or where you got that, but, you know, you're, you're not accurate. So, but my job isn't to pick who I think are winners and losers. My job is to pick who I, for me, my job is to pick who is winners or losers for the taxpayer. Who is going to represent this community, and who's going to do it fairly? That's what we all should want. That's what I want. If, if you don't agree with me, if you can give me a good reason why you don't agree with me, as I pointed out, some of the other reasons, I'll be more than happy to change my vote, if you can give me a good reason, how it benefits a taxpayer. And we've already talked about some of those issues, and they don't. They might benefit ourselves, or they might benefit my neighbor, or they might benefit somebody I work for, but they don't benefit, they don't benefit the taxpayers. They don't benefit the majority of people. And that's how, the only way I know how to represent. That's it. So anything else? And I never said that I can't work with Mike Carlisle. Mike Carlisle was not my choice. I will guarantee you that. I will guarantee you. But that's just the way, I have to choose somebody. If I would have chosen him and somebody else would have disagreed, I would be in the same spot. That's why it has to be my choice.
Okay. If I allusion this, I apologize?
Well, you should.
I just did.
Alderwoman Frank?
Yeah, I just want to say that it's really popular these days, or it's the norm to be hateful and say you hate somebody or you disagree with somebody. I've had shots taken at me. Shannon's had shots taken at her. I mean, why do we have to say this in front of the people? Say it with your vote. Just vote. Let's get this over with.
Yeah, let's vote. Okay. Anybody else? All right. We have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of the motion to consent to and approve the appointment of Rory Peterson as alderman of the second ward to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Alderman Dan, Alderperson Dan Snow, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Nay.
Okay. I don't know. We'll take the roll call.
No.
Barrington?
No.
Fleury?
No.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
No.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
No.
Stevens?
Aye.
Four in favor?
Mr. Mayor, as I think the council heard me say before, we have a local rule that requires everything go to committee first, which is what this did. That rule, section twenty-two dash, I believe it's eight, or two dash eighty-eight, also provides that anything that's required by action by the city council will go to the city council no matter what the vote is at committee. The Illinois municipal code requires a vote of the corporate authorities to either consent or not consent to the appointments of, to fill a vacancy in the, in the position of Alder Person. So this will move forward to council, even though received negative vote, because the Illinois municipal code requires that.
Okay. All right. Motion's five, four, I believe. Five, four against. Is that right? Okay. And it'll be back up at the next city council of the whole, or city council meeting. So if-
August nineteenth.
Make sure you want to attend. I bet you will. Anyhow, with that being said, there's nothing on the agenda. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski, second. Second by Alderman McGee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to stay? For the record, we adjourned at six fifty-three PM.